I have a motion for the first of the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
We have two things to add to the --
Okay.
It goes on.
I got two items that I would like to add. You got those at your desk there. The Planning Commission's schedule meeting for 2013 and a resolution for adoption of the Plan of Services for the annexation of the Biata property located at 7355 Overy Road.
Do you have a number on the resolution?
I do not.
Larry, do you have one?
No. Normally, that would be signed before it goes to the Board of Commissioners. The reason that this was put on here at this time was due to the change in the statute. Under the old statute, if you had an annexation sometime between the first reading and the second reading and the public hearing, you had to approve the Plan of Services. The statute now calls for an advertisement of the first reading, and there are some notifications that have to be made, and accompanying that notification must be a copy of the ordinance and a copy of the resolution approving the Plan of Services. So, we want to get that to the Planning Commission for their approval, recommended approval to the Board, and at that time, the resolution number will be placed on before it goes to the Board of Commissioners.
Do we want that as 8.6, Don?
Any other additions to the agenda?
If there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Item number three is citizen comments. We have Mr. Fred Ryanfield.
Yes, exactly specific to the agenda, so I just wanted to ask the question. Back in October, citizens residing within the Polston Place subdivision made a request to the Commission to provide clear definition regarding residential versus commercial as it pertains to rezoning requests within subdivisions. And we were told at that time it would be postponed until after the election, and then I thought it would -- everyone thought it was going to be on the agenda today. So, I was just wondering, is there a reason it was removed or when it will be rescheduled?
You'd like to speak to that, huh?
We can put it on a future agenda whenever the Planning Commission would like to rehear that.
Was there a reason it was removed from today?
Can you put it on the next agenda, Don?
Okay. Next agenda, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, 4.1 is the approval of the minutes. No's approval.
Second.
Motion for approval and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? There being none, aye, yes, sir.
I didn't get copies of it.
Sure we don't, I'm sorry.
I didn't provide any copies in the packet. Sharon been out on sick leave, so she wasn't able to do the minutes for this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to move the approval to the next meeting. Move the minutes.
Second.
Motion, second, for moving the minutes to the next meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deferal carries. Recommendation 2012, there are none. The bonds, item number six. Mr. Levon.
6.1 is the bond for Buie Commons, the road city center away. If you remember, the Planning Commission required that that maintenance bond run for two years because the road was paved in inclement weather at the time that it was -- the topping was placed on there. That bond, the maintenance period runs out next month, so we're asking that the bond be released.
You need a motion for that? Make a motion to release the bond. Motion, second.
Engineer has inspected it.
I didn't ask him to, but we can before we -- I mean, the road has operated and has seemed to be stable, other than the cut that's having --
The Atlantic MAP Co.
Yeah, and we tried everything that we could to keep that from happening. We tried to get them to move the water lines, but it wasn't any other way to do it, so we had to allow them to cut the road to get their water service to that development. So, other than that, the road is operating. Nothing's failed on it, but if you'd like the city engineer to go and look at it, we can do that before and put it back on the agenda next month.
I think so, because one of the reasons we held off was there was something with the temperature, wasn't there? I mean--
Well, normally, the maintenance bond, we only carry a maintenance bond for a year, but because of the temperature at the time that the topping was put in place, we asked that the Planning Commission require that bond to carry for two years to make sure that the road was going to be good, and it's performing as it's intended to perform. Nothing's failed, but if you'd like the engineer to do the inspection, we can do that.
Does the bond have to be extended, then, since it expires the end of December?
Sixteen.
Well, you can make a motion to release the bond under acceptable inspection from the city engineer, and we could go ahead and release the bond, and if it's not acceptable, then we can have them to post another bond.
Okay. So, move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? I have one question, and it may be out of where the patch is for the MAP Co. Is that all they will come back and do is just a patch pavement there?
No, the municipal code requires that they put back what was taken out, so it's not just going to be a patch, it's going to be compacted. It'll have eight inches of base stone compacted, and then two inches of binder, and then two inches of running course on top of that.
The schedule is going to be where they've cut out?
Yes.
It won't be paved from there all the way to the--
No, it'd be just the patch, but they're complying with the cuts and excavation permit and the guidelines set forth in the municipal code. We've made sure that they're doing it as according to what's been approved in those documents.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
6.2 is Cowell's Creek. If you'll remember, the developer done the final topping on that road last November, but the bond doesn't expire until July, but the maintenance period is over now, so we would ask that this bond be released as well. Will has done an inspection on that, did that inspection last week. We recommend that the bond be released.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion for approval and a second. Discussion.
If there are -- if there's damage to any of the curb, does that -- what does that come under?
It would come under this bond, or it'd still be the developer's responsibility until the city accepts the streets.
So, if we release the bond, then, I mean, is there going to be an inspection and he--
We've already done it. We've done inspection last week.
And you didn't see any curb damage?
Not to my knowledge. Where are you looking at?
I bet it's different.
Where's it at?
In front of my house.
In front of your house?
Mm-hmm.
Where at? At your driveway, or?
No, a little bit past my mailbox.
Is it just a hairline cracks, or is it--
Mm-hmm, it's a piece of the curb that's, like, chomped out of it. And this has nothing to do with being my house. It just -- I'm just asking the question.
Did you inspect the curbs or just the roadway itself?
We were primarily looking at the roadway, just because the only thing I believe that the maintenance bond was held on was that final coat. This is what it is, but-- Right. But we can go back out and take and assess that particular area of the curb. The only--
I don't want to cost the city any extra money to have you go back out. I just wanted to ask the question to get an answer for --
The only--
I haven't gone and looked at all the curb, but I know--
Sure.
--that part I was curious about.
The only concern that may come up is what caused the damage, and if it's not necessarily a result of construction practices, then there may be some question on whether or not that maintenance bond would apply. I'm not saying that, but that could come into play.
Who's with us at the board?
Is that other subdivision, the second phase, been started or any work being done?
They've completed all of the infrastructure as far as the curb and gutter and storm drainage and water and sewer and the binder course of paving. It still has not been platted yet, so they still cannot sell lots until it's platted, but Marlin did -- I did talk to Marlin two weeks ago, and he wanted to know what he needed to do to get that platted, which all he's got to do is just bring the final plat in and sign, and then we can go ahead and record it.
The hardware Cowell's Creek runs down where the last house is, and it continues on. It stops at the start of the plant, and there's, like, a berm put, you know, so I guess it's supposed to be for, you know, people, traffic not to go back through there, but, you know, it's small enough for people to go over, but, I mean, what's the projection for past that? Because wasn't it supposed to be a cul-de-sac?
I don't know if the plat showed a temporary cul-de-sac or not, but what he's got would be considered a temporary cul-de-sac now. Usually, you don't require developers to pave a temporary cul-de-sac because it's something that they're going to have to tear out and continue the road. Usually, it's just gravel, what he's got out there.
Okay, so a temporary cul-de-sac is just to--
So, when people go down through there, they don't have a dead end where they can't turn around. The cul-de-sac's for them to be able to turn around.
So, what you're saying is they're going to -- they have--
There's another, at least another phase, and maybe two more phases.
Okay, because I know it does, you know, the bottom coat does stop abruptly, and then there's, like, a -- you can tell where -- I walked my dog down through there. There's, like, a -- where it's cut out, like, for cul-de-sacs, so I was just curious about that.
It's just a temporary cul-de-sac.
I kind of worry about releasing this, and there's still the potential of big equipment going on the roads, and there's no other construction entrance. And, I mean, is the bond not up till, I mean, expires July 7th? So, I don't know. Why are we doing it in January?
Because we only carry the maintenance bond for a year.
And our year's up, okay.
And he paved, he put the final topping on in November, at the end of November, so his year's maintenance period is up.
Okay.
And the subdivision regulations say that we will release the bond after that maintenance period is up.
Okay.
Don, wouldn't he still be responsible for any damage caused by his equipment on that road?
If you can prove who caused the damage, then you can get restitution for the damage.
When will the city take over that road?
If you all approve the release of the bond, next month, I'll have the roads to be accepted on the Planning Commission's agenda next month for a recommendation back to the Board of Commissioners.
And then at that point, if some damage did occur, it'd be up to the city, not the individual's homeowners, to seek restitution for the damage.
He don't accept the road until he fixes the curb. He can't make you accept the road until--
So, that would be the next motion I was going to make right there, that we wouldn't let curbs fixed, and if there's any other damage that, until that point, we don't accept the road. It's still all his responsibility. Okay. I'd be motion, I'll put it in there.
I second that.
And I guess I do need to make everyone aware, just for the record, that I live there.
Where the crack is, where the curb is. It's going to be looked at.
Well, you know, I didn't, like, I walked my dog out there. I didn't go and inspect each curb, but because I live there, I do know that that curb has a divot out of it. I mean, I could walk the whole thing and check it out.
Mr. Sutton, restate your motion, please.
My motion be that we approve of the bond being released, but prior to the city taking over control of the road, possession of the road, that any curbs or any slight damage be corrected. It would still be his responsibility up to that point. Am I correct, Don?
Yes.
That's the motion.
Okay, and then Ms. Carroll, you second it? Yeah, okay.
My question there would be, are we in discussion?
Go ahead.
My question there would be, is that not the only one way in to his future development?
Yes, that's the only way.
What are the requirements of the city not to accept a road that is the single entrance to a future development?
When he starts a future development, you bond the road that's already there in addition to the ones that's there, to the new ones.
Do we have to accept the road?
No, you don't have to accept the road, but if you do accept the road, I mean, that's up to the city where they accept the road or not, but if you do accept the road, and that's going to be your entrance way to Phase Two and Three, when you do your bonding for the new phases, you also make them put a maintenance bond down on the road they're going to be running over, so that way, if there's any type of damage done to it, it doesn't matter. I mean, if you can establish someone else did it, then you go after them, but if you bond that road, because anyone knows that when you're going in there with heavy traffic, heavy loads and this kind of stuff, you may not damage the road, but I think you'd have a heightened possibility of damaging that road.
And I would question, releasing a maintenance bond, that we're going to need another maintenance bond if he comes with another phase. Is there another way to go about this?
Well, like I said, the subdivision regulations state, once the maintenance period's over, you release the bond. He's followed the procedures of doing his final topping. It's run its course for a year. He's done his part according to our subdivision regulations.
I don't question that. I'm asking if we -- have we had a situation like this where we released a bond, and he's in process of getting a future development to the Planning Commission, and then we ask for a new bond?
His Phase Two bond renews in July as well. When he comes back to renew that bond, you could increase that bond based on that first phase, him having to use that first phase. So, whatever monies that Will would put in there for that first phase topping, you can add that to that second phase bond.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Don. Item seven is Old Business, 7.1. The vacation of the lot six from the Evergreen Industrial Park subdivision plat, map 18, parcel 42.27, 6.97 acres. Kelly Shriver owner. Mr. Chaplain, if you would.
Currently, Ms. Fagan now owns the property instead of Kelly Shiver at this time.
Do we have the necessary signatures?
We have, we were short two last month, and we have one that was sent to us, a certified letter. They were out of town, and there's only one that we're lacking.
Did I hear you state that you are now the new owner of the property already?
Yes.
This sale was not contingent on this board passing this?
Correct. I have attempted to reach the parties by certified mail, and one party did respond with a signature that's notarized, so the one that is outstanding is still outstanding. So, I'd like to get other suggestions from the commission as to, you know, what process to take, because I had not been able to get this one signature.
City attorney, do you have any suggestions for her?
No, ma'am. There is no substitute for the other signature. The subdivision regulation is very clear, requires the approval of all the owners, and there is no provision for failure to respond being transformed into an affirmative. I cannot, by any non-action on your part, make that affirmative. I mean, you've got to have the signatures of all the property owners, including, as a matter of fact, I think, the city, because the city still owns the lake out there. I don't know what the recommendation would be from the city. I don't think the city has a great deal of objection to it, but it requires 100% of the signatures, and there's just, there's no way around it.
Where is the person located that, the one that's outstanding?
It is the paving company that is the furthest away from the lot I'm trying to make a--
But the people you need to contact, where are they located?
They're located off of Highway 96 at the opposite end of the industrial park.
This is Tennessee Valley.
Tennessee Valley.
Have you been to his office, either in Fairview or Franklin?
That's what I was asking.
I haven't been to his office twice in Fairview, and I have called numerous times and sent certified--
Have you ever spoke to him?
No.
Okay. I don't see exactly how we can discuss 7-1 or 7-2. Where we left it last month was to discuss 8.5, to be able to discuss what that means to make something different than what the rules are now that she's being told no because the rules are not met, so I'm not real sure if 7.1 or 7.2 is able to be discussed.
And with that being said, I'll make a motion to table 7.1 and 7.2 either until 8.5 is passed and the new ordinance is in effect, or you get that signature. That is my motion.
Is the person that you're trying to contact, are they not, are they not speaking to you on purpose, or is it, I'm just curious--
I've tried to get information to them by--
Point of order. We got a motion, and I need a second to go further for discussion.
Tony, second.
Discussion, now, Ms. Anderson.
I'm just trying to get-- An idea how we can help.
Yeah.
That's what I want to know.
I've talked to the workers that are out there, and I've talked to the secretary, and she finally told me that neither one of the owners wanted to talk to me, so that's when I sent the certified letter, which was returned as accepted, but it was, nothing was returned for or against this motion.
So, in my opinion, you've shown due diligence in trying to get this resolved. We've got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Good luck.
Moving on to New Business, 8.1 is the final site plan for Fast Pace Medical Clinic to add a 1,390 square feet addition and parking lot located at 2727 Fairview Boulevard, map 69, parcel 60. Stanley Mark Beavis and Richard Rings Powers owners. Is anyone here to represent Fast Pace? Come to the podium, sir. State your name.
Jim Lukens, Lukens Engineering.
Hold the mic up, I'll put it to you. Thank you. Move for approval.
Second.
Approved and a second. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 8.1 is approved. 8.2 is the design review for Fast Pace Medical Clinic located at 2727 Fairview Boulevard, map 69, parcel 60. Stanley Mark Beavis and Richard Rings Powers owners.
Not real?
Second. Discussion. Don, does it meet everything?
Don, does it meet everything? Get Winnie's far as though?
Yes, sir. I was trying to get the rendering up on the screen. For some reason, it's not going.
Gotta be beautiful, thank you.
I like the landscape.
Can't make that one happen.
There we go.
Very nice.
As you can see, it's a, a nice upgrade to, to the building that's there. They wanted to match the architectural stylings of Westview Plaza. Looks like they've done a great job. The, the addition that they've done did not really require them to do this. They've, they've actually done this on their own.
I'd like to state, the comments I made last month were incorporated in the final design and I appreciate that.
Sure.
Great.
All those in favor, signify five percent, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir. 8.3, set the site bond for the Fast Pace Medical Clinic located at 2727 Fairview Boulevard, map 69, parcel 60. Stanley Mark Beavis and Richard Rings Powers owners. Will, do you have us a bond?
Yes, sir. We're there, 8.3. Last sentence, set the bond, site bond amount to 4,000.
Approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor, signify five percent, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
8.4, discuss annual action on a request to amend the approved design for stuff it in, again relative to the tree plant and fence buffer located at 712 Highway 96 North. Map 22, parcel 150.02, Big Little Investments LLC owner. Anyone here to represent them?
He, Mr. Schreiber called me today and basically told me he was going to withdraw this, I suppose, and he was not going to come tonight.
So it is withdrawn?
He's not here, he is.
Make a motion that this is deferred to, referred to the tree board?
You can do that and that'll be fine, but based on his conversation with me today, he was just going to go ahead and put the trees in.
Okay.
Instead of not do them, so.
Did he discuss the fence?
From, from what he told me today, he was going to do what was on the plan. He wasn't going to change anything because he didn't want to cause any waves.
Okay, well, he, he never, I mean, I hadn't heard from him, so I didn't know.
That was about 10 o'clock this morning.
I'm going to make a motion if this is not, if it's not withdrawn, that it's deferred, deferred to the tree board, and if you confirm otherwise, then it won't be on the agenda and you'll be able to add that to the tree board agenda.
My second pick. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify five percent, aye?
Aye.
8.4, any opposed? 8.5, discuss amending the subdivision regulations to the vacation of subdivision plats.
I'd like to ask Don or Will to discuss details in what that sentence means to all subdivision, past and present and future, housing subdivision as well.
The definition of a subdivision plat is any partition of land. So any subdivision that is approved and platted can be vacated according to our subdivision regulations. Y'all got a copy of, of this one page that shows the, the procedures for vacation of plats. Stays in there that, that the property owner or the developer, as long as he owns all the property, he can vacate a portion of the plat, the entire plat or whatever, just by a, a document recorded at, at the register's office. But if there's any lots that have been sold, that have been sold, then every owner that owns property in that subdivision has to sign off on the executing of, of that document and as, as it's recorded to the register's office. It, it doesn't differentiate, doesn't make a difference.
Differentiate.
Differentiate between a residential subdivision, a, a industrial subdivision, or a commercial residential subdivision. A subdivision is a subdivision regardless because of the pure definition of any partition of land is a subdivision, regardless of what it's owned or what, what the use of the property is.
Or size.
Or size. So the way it is, you have to have 100% of the, the owners of that property to sign off on vacation of a plat. If you change that to say 50%, 75%, then you kindly are doing a disservice to property owners that purchase property in a subdivision under their impression that there's restricted covenants in that subdivision that's going to protect them from different things happening on adjacent properties that surround them. And if you've got restricted covenants and you vacate a plat, then that portion of the plat that's vacated is no longer under those subdivision regulations. So they could do whatever they wanted to as long as it was within our zoning code on that property, which may not be allowed by the whole subdivision as a whole. But because that one lot gets vacated, then, then he can do what he wants to as long as he's within our zoning code. So to me, you do a, a disservice to property owners that they feel secure in purchasing property in a subdivision based on them having restricted covenants. And we know that all subdivisions, not all subdivisions have restricted covenants, but they are subject to having restricted covenants. Our industrial park has restricted covenants, so residential subdivisions have restricted covenants, and just regular commercial subdivisions have restricted covenants as well. So it's solely up to this board whether or not you want to change that regulation. And my recommendation would be to leave it as it is, to require 100% because you may have a situation where 50% of the neighborhood really don't care, but then the other 50% does, and you kind of pit homeowners and property owners against other property owners in, in that sense. So, but like I said, this board can make those changes or recommend that those changes be made. If you want to change it, I will have to bring back next month a resolution to make those changes and we'll have to have a public hearing prior to hearing that on that agenda as well.
When you said subdivisions are subdivisions and they're not different, who says it can't be?
Well, just by the pure definition of a subdivision.
Can you say a subdivision of industrial zoning, a subdivision of residential and make this to where we have maybe three, as you pointed out, there's three different, to look at those and see if there's, if there's any difference between the three versus it being one? Because I have a concern with the commercial being one way and the residential being the same way, because it, I think it could be different situations that come up.
Well, far as vacating the plat, I, I don't see where there would really be a difference because you're still protecting property owners the same way in a residential subdivision as you would be a commercial subdivision, as you would be an industrial subdivision. So in that sense, I wouldn't think that you would want to make a difference in saying, okay, if you're, you're industrial, we'll allow 50%. If you're commercial, we'll allow 75%, but if you're residential, it takes 100%. Because people buy property in subdivisions based solely because a lot of times they've got restricted covenants and they feel like they're being protected in some way.
Is there a problem on the restrictive covenants?
Well, some restrictive covenants run 20 years, some run 30 years, some run 50 years. It's just whatever the developer used, whatever he decides he wants to put in it when he draws them up.
So when the restricted.
Can they be changed? Yes, they can be changed, but most of them say that you have to have at least 51% or 75% of the homeowners or the property owners to make those changes.
See, that's odd that he says that right there when he's talking about, we require 100%, but then they're all, within their own regulations, they may do it at 51 or 75.
They're, they're totally different.
I understand that.
There's some that are 100.
And we don't, we don't govern those restrictive covenants anyway.
We don't enforce covenant restrictions, but you're looking at a totally different thing of changing a covenant restriction versus vacating a subdivision plat. The thing that, that concerns me, if I could, and I try to say this every time that this comes up, the city does not, is not a party to and does not enforce restrictive covenants unless they violate a city ordinance. Any person who owns property in there can enforce a restrictive covenant. A homeowners association can, and usually does enforce the covenant restrictions, but if, you see some subdivisions, especially residential, that has a homeowners association when they start, later the homeowners association becomes ineffective and ultimately somewhere down the road ceases to exist. But any person who owns property in there can still enforce that restrictive covenant. The thing that concerns me about changing this is you do, you're going to reduce somewhat the protection of the citizens, but let's say that, that the board, and that's totally this board's call, but let's say you say, okay, we're going to change this to 90%. Six months from now, I come back and I say, I've got this lot out here I'd like to vacate, but I can't get 90%, but I can get 80%. Will you change it to 80%? And then six months, somebody else comes in and says, I can't get 80, but I can get 70. Will you take 70? And you get into a bidding situation on changing this and where do you stop? I mean, you can say, okay, 90%, that's going to be it, but you, you would have that precedent and say, will you change it to 90%? Two years from now, another board's here and they say, change it from 90. Why don't you change it to 80? You cease to protect those people who've bought that property in there, be it whatever kind of, of property it is, because they bought that partially relying upon the fact that, let's say I had a, a very close-knit industrial subdivision. I don't know why you'd want to, but you want to build a house in there and if the house doesn't match any of the other stuff that's in there. But they're not part of the, of that plat anymore and they can, they can do what they want. But certainly it's up to the board as to what, what, it's not illegal to make differences between the classifications. It's not illegal to require different percentages. It gets to be confusing and if you're going to do that, you would be better to require, to, to split them up than it would be saying, okay, we've got 90 for this one and then somebody has a different one and says, well, I don't need but 70 over here because I'm industrial. And, and just where, where do you stop?
Don, were you sitting on the planning commission or Stewart, either one, when we approved the paving place out there? It would not give some variances there for him to have the paving place there?
That property was sold while the city still had control over the subdivision regulations and the city sold it to them for the purpose of putting the plant there. As, and it is against the restrictive covenants, but the city allowed that to happen because they own the controlling interest of the park at the time.
I was thinking, there was some issue about that. Do you remember it, Stewart?
No, I believe that was before me.
It was before, before he was elected.
It has been a long time.
Yes, it has.
But if it had to do with the covenant restrictions, that's, I understand your question, but that's not what we're discussing on the subdivision.
Well, I was wondering whether or not we were in line to do that, but since the city owned it at the time, they could pretty well.
No, a variance and a.
Ordinance changes.
Yeah, a variance and then actually taking, vacating from the plats, two totally different elements.
I was thinking that this possibly was added to the industrial park at the time because it was a separate.
And I do want to say, I, I believe it's the interest of all of the board, and I know you've addressed several and I appreciate your, your conversation, that it's not a negative to you or your plans, nothing that we're discussing. So I do apologize if it seems to be either point A or zero, but there's a discussion that is in depth here that changes a lot of matrix of pieces and it does need to be looked at in the big whole. And I, you know, I just, I'm sure everybody feels that way. I want to apologize that you're in the middle of the discussion, but you've brought forth the discussion in saying, what can else be done versus your rule? I just felt the need to tell you that.
Would, would it be necessary to add this to a workshop in the future?
Whatever the board wants to do.
Well, I mean, it's a real issue. I mean, we've got to figure out, I don't know what's the best way.
If no one here is comfortable in changing it, I don't think we should schedule a workshop.
Well, I think Beverly brought up a, a good point because of the commercial versus residential subdivisions in, in case of the future.
It was saying, if there was one way to look at it, could we slice it three ways and look at it differently and would that look different once we discussed it? That was why I brought that up. And Don makes a very good point, is where do you make one the way and one the not the way?
That's, that would be my main question.
I see that.
I understand what he said about pitting people against one another, but in that same statement, I understand that he basically described America and the democracy that we live in and that people have the right and people will disagree and that's why there's so many of us sitting up here, because we're not all going to agree all the time. And it's just like you could, two homeowners could have two different signs in their yard, one for two different candidates. So I don't, I don't look at it as, it's going to start fights, but there again, I don't, I don't know that, just like Larry said, that we change it because somebody comes here and wants it changed and then next week, somebody else comes. I'd work hard on.
That one last signature. Yeah.
Absolutely.
And that would be my encouragement, is that one last signature is your answer. You've, you've achieved what needs to be achieved. And I know it sounds difficult, but I was very shocked when you said the person that you've not been able to communicate with, so I.
But it is something we need to bring up in the future.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying. I wouldn't stop at a secretary. I'd get to the person, but that's me.
Is there business season? Asphalt companies?
Yeah.
Give them another week and.
They do shut down. When? When did the asphalt plant shut down?
Today.
I don't believe that could have paid us today. Temperature-wise, I'd put it that way.
This really doesn't concern the board that much, but I, there's got to be something in there why he doesn't want to talk to you.
That's my, that's why.
There's something, I don't, you know, there's, why not, you know, if everybody else wants to, he don't, there's a reason behind it and I think y'all need to sit down and discuss that and find out. I'm sure that with some persuasion from someone, that they'll be willing to sit down and talk. Give you a yes or a no? That if I'm not mistaken, they haven't given you any answer, right? You know, if it's no, ask nicely why. If it's yes, thank you very much.
What was your motion again, Stewart?
On this, I'll just make a motion to table it indefinitely.
Didn't we have a second already?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Signify five percent, aye? Opposed? 8.6 is the plan for the. 8.6 is the plan for the schedule for the planning commission for the 2013 year. Don, you want to address that, please?
Just following our normal meeting schedules, the planning commission meeting is on the second Tuesday of every month. The deadlines for the submittals of each month will be the Friday following the planning commission meeting in that month. Staff reviews are on the third Wednesday of every month, except in the month of May, it's on the fourth Wednesday, and you'll have a minimum of 11 days to review your package and a maximum of 18 days to review the packet.
Move for approval? Motion and a second. Any discussion on the schedule for the 2013 year? All those in favor, 75 percent, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 8.6 carries. 8.7 is the resolution.
So, resolution adopting the plan of services for the annexation of property belonging to Kathy E. Beata and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee. The property is located at 7355 Overby Road, Fairview, Tennessee, and is shown on City of Fairview, Tennessee Geological List and Assessment Row, map 46, parcel 44. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Not all those in favor, 75 percent, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 8.7 carries. Item number nine is reports and discussion and information. 9.1, the planning and zoning department. Mr. LeBorne.
Next month, we'll have on our agenda, we've got some newfound interest in Hightberry Point coming back. They'll be submitting a preliminary plat for 23 lots to start that subdivision. Mr. Stephen Hagan, when we talked last week, he said that he would hopefully want to start construction within nine months, so he was wanting to move forward and get something started out there with that subdivision. And looks like things are maybe taking a turn up, and hopefully we'll get some more interest in some other subdivisions as well. And I guess that's all I have. Well, a Merry Christmas to everybody, since we won't have a meeting until January. Enjoyed being your technical support for this past year, and I think everybody is doing a fine job, and I appreciate all y'all's work.
Thank you, Don. City engineer, Mr. Owen.
Thank you, Chairman. One thing that Don and I have discussed in the past is an attempt, hopefully, if it's desired by the commissioners, an attempt to include a written list of maybe just the engineering comments, but maybe all the staff comments within your packets that are sent out. Is that something that would interest the commissioners to have in their packets?
Yes.
Okay. We may start with just, with primarily my comment, because I don't want to hold Don to something that he hadn't agreed to yet. And sometimes the logistics of the staff review, along with the timing, doesn't necessarily work out all the time, but moving forward, starting in January, what I'll try to do is include my engineering comments in your packets, and so you'll at least have a chance to see what we saw initially, and then hopefully be able to see that those changes have been made with the inclusions in your packets, whether those were revised plans, or if those revised plans had not been submitted by the time your packets went out, to be able to address and see that those comments were addressed by the time that plans were before you at the next meeting. So that's something I'm going to shoot to do this coming year. Other than that, I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, and appreciate the well wishes and prayers and blessings for the new little one that we have at home. So, thank you.
City attorney, Mr. Cantrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to take this opportunity to, since we won't have another meeting this year, to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe Happy New Year. It'll be after the New Year before we meet again. Thank you for putting up with me for another year. I will always try to tell you what I think the law is. I apologize that sometimes I can't tell you what you may want the law to be. That question would address itself to the legislature and not me, that's above my pay grade, but I do appreciate the opportunity to work with you. It's been an honor to work with all of you this past year. I realize we're going to be losing probably a couple of our commissioners. I know Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Carroll, when the new ones are appointed. Missed this last time, and they're here again, and may be here again next month, but it's been a pleasure to work with you, and I look forward to working with you again next year.
Thank you. City manager, Mr. Hyatt.
Hi, Hyatt Milton, sir.
Thank you, sir. Communication from the planning commissioners. Commissioner Beata.
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy and safe New Year. Look forward to next year.
Commissioner Anderson.
I'd like to also wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and just thank Don, Will, Mr. Cantrell, Mr. Hyatt, and I've really, I've been on the planning commission for a long time, and I think we have a really good group of people up here that really take the citizens in our city, their thoughts and ideas and concerns into consideration, and do a good job at running the city. As the last month of the year, I'd still want to encourage everyone to shop in your own city, keep your money here, help Fairview to grow and be very successful, and I have three businesses that I'd like to highlight. One is At Grade Land Surveying. Sean Keaton is the owner, and he's local here in Fairview. He does boundary, construction, topographic mapping, and elevation certificates. So he's a good one. I've spoken to him quite a bit, and he does a really good job. We have a business that's been around for about six months. It's called Not Upon, and I went in there today to check them out, because I've seen them as I pass through, and they're down near the rec center in that-
Brook West.
Brook West, thank you. Little strip that kind of, you know, it's near the Highway 100, but instead of going straight, you know, along Highway 100, it's kind of vertical to it. They've got just anything you could ask for, CDs, DVDs, and, you know, all the different things that, sort of like a pawn shop would have, and they buy and sell and trade. Michael Dodson's the owner, and they're open every day but Sunday, and nice little business there. Tams Embroidery is another one. They're in the-
Midtown Plaza.
Midtown Plaza, and it's up closer to the other end of town, the east end of town. And I went in there, I've done business with them, and they take care of all your embroidery needs, and have a lot of, they support the schools, and have a lot of different items that, you know, school wear. So those are the three that I'd like to highlight, and just, you know, just make sure that you check before you leave your own city and spend your money here.
Thank you. I'd like to say, Commissioner Carroll had to leave early. Her daughter's in a program at school, and I'd just like to make that comment, that she had to leave early for that reason. Mayor Tiede.
First, I would like to acknowledge that we have guests in City Hall tonight that are applicants interested in serving the community as part of the planning commission as the city has solicited out for applicants. I would like to ask if the board would want to maybe introduce, allow them to introduce them at the very end, be the wishes of the board. Second is, I would like to ask Don, we had a discussion some time ago, and we were going to put on the agenda, and I'd like to see, would January be timely to put reviewing and discussing land use map? Is there any reason why it's not ready for that, and you had another plan? Just curious.
Do you just want the-
Would we want to do a workshop prior to and have it on the agenda?
Do you want the map as it is approved now in your packets, or will I send everybody the map if you still have it? I'll send you a big-
I don't know, did we ever get it to a size?
I don't think we ever got a file on the map that we could drag, not, I mean-
Large enough for viewing?
I sent y'all a large one with a description on how to read it.
I did, yeah, we did get that. What did we do after that, I guess, is my question?
That's where it was at.
Can we pick that up either in workshop or in our January agenda?
Whatever the board wants to do, I mean.
Because you just gave it to us, and we didn't do anything with it further, did we?
No.
Okay.
Well, we approved-
You approved it.
Choice of one or two. We approved one, but you couldn't see it, but we could see it, so I'd like to look at it.
And that's the reason why I printed the big one out and sent a description on how to read it. And it was-
I said we put it on the agenda, and however long it takes, it takes.
Well, I believe that's one thing that our, the planner, Mr. Martin, had mentioned to us about continuing to discuss the zoning and to continue to discuss the land use as we see future growth, because we all can't build on top of City Hall. It's got to have different places, so I guess that's why I bring that up. Did we ever kind of go past where Mr. Martin was guiding us into the land use and the zoning?
Well, I guess we kind of stepped back from that because we didn't know the direction that the board was wanting to go with Mr. Martin. We had our-
Did he give us some homework that we could be working on ourselves without his initiative?
Well, we had the initial drive-through of the city, and it was supposed to be followed up with a drive-through through Franklin that we haven't done yet, and after that, we were supposed to have a community meeting all together to discuss what we've seen and then plan from that point forward. So what his services was to offer was a total complete package of land use, infrastructure plan, and a major thoroughfare plan, along with zoning and subdivision regulations, And so we're, I was kind of wanting direction on what the board wanted to do as far as going further with Mr. Martin.
I'd like to see the land use and zoning on the next agenda for us to discuss. Are we satisfied? Do we see issues? Do we see growth, linear growth that's unbecoming? Do we see the roadways? I just think that looking at what we've got and then how it's growing, that's where we left off by sharing with us what the current land use and the current zoning is. So if we have it on the next agenda, we can discuss it. It can take a life of its own then. And Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Commissioner Benz.
I'd just like to take a moment to say what a pleasure it's been to work with board members this past year in the city administration. Look forward to next year. I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New-
Thank you. Commissioner Sett.
I'd like to thank city manager, all the planning department, COs department. Without this department functioning like they do, we couldn't get the information that we need to make the decisions that we make. I know it's not easy. I know we ask a lot of you sometimes to go back and continue to go back with different things, and I just want you to know that we really appreciate it. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I'd also like to let everybody know that there's a Pancake Breakfast at Applebee's in Dixon for the Boys and Girls Club this Saturday morning. It's $5 a ticket. Please contact the Boys and Girls Club or me, and everybody have a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. A lot of people have done a lot of good work, and you've heard a lot of people get thanked this evening, and I'm going to thank one that hadn't been thanked yet, and it's Chairman Hall. He has served this city for 18 or 19 years now, and he's been here every day. I've been here the last 12 years that I've served, and he served with my old wife's grandfather before that, and you're going to hear some news that's a little bit shocking to you in just a moment, but I want to thank him for the almost 20 years he's dedicated to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Have one suggestion on the future of the planning commission. As far as appointing new members, I would like to see some sort of a training schedule before you set a commissioner up here blindfolded, which I was several years ago. And I think you, possibly, Don, you know, everybody else that's been up here, but if you had, say, a three to a six-month training period of workshops, coming to the meetings, that way they would get some of the jitters out of the way before they actually set up here to contribute to the planning commission itself. That's one thing I'd like to see in the future, if you possibly could take that into consideration when y'all do appoint new commissioners up here. Now, I do have something to read, and it won't take but a second. And this is addressed to Don LeBorne. This letter is to inform the city of Fairview that I am resigning my chairmanship of the Fairview Planning Commission immediately. I want to thank everyone that I've served with over the last 18 years. The many things that I have been a part of on the approval process are too numerous to mention. I am very proud of my part in the conservation easement and the protection of Bowie Park. This led to the commercial area around City Hall. Thank you. Merry Christmas to everybody. With adjournance.
Sorry. Mayor, do you want to bring them up?
I would just, I'm not sure which ones are, so anyone that has considered and put in an application for consideration could come and address the four.
For 19 years, look forward to doing my part. I run a construction company in Nashville. We do mainly commercial industrial, development of subdivisions, you know, infrastructures going in and out, and just thought I'd give my hand.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
I'm Lacy Chivers, and I've lived in Fairview 12 years, moved here from Arkansas. And had a little experience in Arkansas working for economic development, and I'm very passionate about Fairview, and we have got a diamond in the rough here, and it's a perfect opportunity to preserve what we have and not look at, not necessarily make it like Franklin, but make it better than Franklin and Brimwood, and that's what I want to do on the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for excusing my voice at the end of this famous virus that we've all been passing around. My name is Marcia Elliott. I've been in Fairview since 1996. We came here after 10 years' service in Haiti doing humanitarian aid, and it's been a great pleasure to come to call Fairview really home, and it's actually the place that in 32 years of marriage, we've lived longest. And we appreciate the city so much that when a couple of people asked me if I would consider providing input, I decided to offer my hand. I trust the board to make a wonderful decision, and I wish and pray the very best for all of you in the new year. of you in the New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. That it? Thank you. Okay.
Can I say one more?
Yes, sir.
Just to echo what Commissioner Johnson said, I've known Chairman Hall for the last five years now. I met him on the campaign trail, and he was nice enough to hand out my cards when I was running against him, and he has been a true inspiration to me for everything that I have been a part of, whether it be the city commissioner, the planning commission, the many other things that we do up here. Wayne has always been a perfect gentleman, always offered his help and support, and this city owes you a great deal. Thank you.
Where, John?
Efficient. Thank you, sir.